We're ready when you are.
This meeting of the Governance Committee, the order November twenty ninth at two P M. Andy Hallman, Board Member and Chair.
I think it's working.
It's been just in chief academic officer.
Party language, chief H R.
And Chief Financial Officer Jim Anderson, Chief Operating Officer Mike Fleck, I'm sorry, Chief Information Officer.
Amanda Foster, Executive Assistant to the Board.
And why?
We have President Bellamy and Member Lessons, and it looks like Member Donley just joined us as well.
Okay. Um.
Number one item on the agenda for today is an Operations Audit Committee. And directly in response to both of our questions from Member Higgins. Member Higgins, you want to speak to it?
And after that, President Bellamy also has her hand up.
Okay.
I do, thank you. And we had discussions with the board and the committee. There is grounds right now for audits to be done out of government. And I'm not proposing changing that, it would delay the process and delay. Things that don't need to be delayed beneficial. So the issue is the role of the Governance Committee in the audit process. Internal operational audits, and that's what we're referring to right now. I provided language in here that looking with the superintendent. That we would develop a list of what we wanted to see audit and the scopes. And we would have a relationship with the audit that the audit report comes to the president, comes to here because it could be in conflict with what the superintendent. Because he's overseeing this, that may or may not be an issue. So the scope of it is very important that the board approved the final scope. And that the board received the report, it's not, the board would not be engaged. And assisting in the audit other than discussion with the scope. Of the audit that would be the only role and receiving it and asking any questions about it. So that's the purpose of the of the report, I've seen in here. A presentation or something from the superintendent's audit plan with departments and operations. And as I read it, the superintendent will develop. An audit plan by himself or with his staff to review all district departments and operations. And the plan will include. Input from the Governance Committee, so he will control, knows the board is reporting to the superintendent. And will include the following details, blah. You know, once an audit is completed, the auditor's findings and recommendations will go to the superintendent and will be shared with the Governance Committee. So we, he is viewed as the source and the control of the audit. In regards to the process. And the Governance Committee and Superintendent will present. Final report recommendation to the full board, his change in here is that the board superintendent would have the ability. To stop some audits from being done because he doesn't want it done. Or he can change the scope of it and the board can provide input, but the board will not control that issue. Now, we have never had this problem before in regards to internal audit. Okay, it hasn't been a problem in the past. But this scope of determining and putting a scope on the limits of what the audit can be. And that the superintendent will control the board in regards to this is disturbing, is concerning, I'm shocked a little bit by it. Superintendent previously made statements that he would be supportive of whatever the board decides, he was very comfortable with that. Now we've got something which to me more parallels what was being presented as an option last Governance Committee. Is that we're basically going to be informed when audits are done. This one gives a little bit more, but not much. I just don't, from a management standpoint, I've never seen it where the subordinate will decide. What will or will not be allowed or what will be done. Our job, our job is overview, okay, we either made it or we don't. And the idea of the internal audit is to address concerns that we may have and address operation, look for changes that can be beneficial. But somehow controlling that the board will not look at some audits or what they will be allowed to do or what will be done. And what the scope of that audit will be limited based upon whatever the superintendent allows. To me is totally inappropriate. I would not want this to be out there public as a statement of saying this is how the board oversees it. Or this is what our new superintendent wants. I think that would be very concerning to me. And it would be public if that adopted that sort of approach because it would, it would go public. I just find it disappointing. And I would love an explanation of why. The only difference here is who controls who, who's reporting to who, why this is being presented and what issue is being addressed or concerns. From the superintendent that this change needs to be approved.
Member Bellamy or President Bellamy is next in the speaking order.
Yes, thank you. Mister Chair, I'm not sure what, which document is Member Higgins referring to?
The document that you provided.
Right, and that was, I provided it, but there was, there was no action on it. And what's on the table is what he put on the table. I said, I shared that at the last meeting, that is correct. I don't see a whole lot of difference in what he's saying and what, what he's wanting and what, what's there, but really, there is no. Argument about the value of an audit. Whatever the committee decides is whatever the committee decides. So nothing is out there, I shared it, had I really noticed it was on the agenda, I would have taken it off. Because I did not submit it as a replacement for what Member Higgins had already. Suggested. But I did share it as, as a way to, to identify a process. And if the process is wrong, then let's just fix it. I mean, we're, I think we're, I think we're probably on the same page more than we're not. But, so anyway, that, that was my comment, and if I could have one point of order, Matt, Mister Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Aside from that, not to derail the conversation, but we did have, we have a time sensitive. Issue which is the joint resolution. With the assembly that we would like to move out of committee if we could add it to the agenda. For today, if, if there's time, thank you.
It is on the agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
So let me get a point of clarification, this superintendent's audit plan for departments and operations didn't come from the superintendent?
No, it came from Margot Bellamy as a way of me thinking through a process, Member Higgins.
The, the heading on it looks like the superintendent's plan.
That, that, that's the heading I put on it, we can change it, that really, that was, those were just my thinking. Trying to draw us a little closer together as a committee. Nothing came from the superintendent.
I will read it down for my minutes, okay, go ahead.
And I'd say that the superintendent's audit plans regardless of where it came from. I mean, that's something that the superintendent has a prerogative to do. And something you may want to do at times, just if it's on the court and managing the district. The issue of whether or not we establish a separate operations audit committee. I see it as a separate issue. And those would be ones that would be overseen by the committee on behalf of the board. I will say that I remember the list that Member Lessons provided to us of. A whole bunch of the audits. Seems to me like somewhere there's a piece of paper with more on the, that this from years.
Yes.
And. I have, as Governance Chair, I've forgotten about it and did not realize. That governance had domain over management audits. But that's part of the reason I feel like a standalone committee for just that purpose would be useful. And it would be the only thing on the agenda for that committee as it meets. And because it takes a lot of thought, these are not simple things, they're not free. They're concerned of both some funds and personnel time. And it would only be fair to the administration. To kind of weigh them out. A year or so into the future, I think, in kind of the same way we do with bonds and construction money. You don't, you don't want to come up with one in January and expect to have it begin to happen in February. I think we'd want a list of like the next ten or twelve we wanted to do over a couple of years. And begin to put the planning in place, the people and, and all that stuff. And I, the Governance Committee's been busy enough over the past couple of years. I don't see that committee giving it the consideration that it really deserves. So I'm. I, I agree with the idea of a standalone committee that reports to the board that has the oversight over them. But it's actually hoping we might. Look at some of the audits we feel are critical and maybe get some started today. But. First, first up is whether or not we establish a standalone committee. Anyone else in the order or wish to speak?
Yeah, I would like to put out that I, I don't think talking about audits needs to be confrontational at all. I don't think it is, it, I mean, when we talked about all the internal audits. I mean, we had conversations, we talked through it, we helped scope it. And there's going to be things from the administration's side that we want to make sure included in an audit. Because frankly, the school board. Just because of the jobs is never going to be working sixty hours a week, running departments every day, and so. The chiefs who are responsible for our departments should legitimately have input on areas of concern. But I don't recall, I don't recall in the last eight years. As we work through the internal audit ones, I don't think we've had a conflict, not one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't recall that there's ever been an administration versus board attempt on any of our audits.
There has been one with the superintendent back in two thousand eight adopted Everyday Math. That was a very controversial, and there was a lot of objections for the public and from teachers. And the board decided to conduct an audit of that without the strong support, shall we say, of the superintendent. The audit came back that was. Critical of the process that was used on adopting it, it didn't try to get bring teachers in, it didn't try to get support. And it said the best that could be done for Everyday Math was in San Antonio where they got average results. So, and the decision was then to move past it. But that was the only one that was controversial when the superintendent was in a position to have vetoed it because she was the one that pushed it forward. She clearly didn't want that audit. So there are potentials out there of looking at, looking at areas where there are. Decisions made that looked at, then the board may want to look at, board looked at that when the public was applauding. And teachers were applauding when we moved past Everyday Math, because that was heavy language based math. And it was something that they bring it down math course ways because of reading skills and other likes, and so they moved past that. But that was one that was controversial, and that's, that's, that's a basis. We have had past superintendents that didn't want any audits. From a P R standpoint, and that was within the last ten years. And, and that was a little different. But overall, the relationship has been great on audits, we don't get involved to tell the auditor how they do it. It's, it's, it's the, it's the administration and it's the auditor, we're bringing in people from other big school districts. So they got a lot to offer in regards to changes and to adopt it, and it's from people that have a lot of experience in what we're trying to accomplish. And do a good job screening, and it's cheap, and I'm cheap. So I think it's very beneficial, I think it can be a great relationship. And I think the administration benefits and the board benefits for meeting our obligation for oversight.
But I do think the scale and scope is also a joint, a joint thing, because there might be things I'm worried about. In my operation that all seven board members don't even know anything about, but to me it's important. Because I know that I cut people in that shop. So I no longer know if anything's happening because there's no reports coming out anymore. So, or, or some other reason, right, just something where it just feels like something's off and I just can't get the information that I want. Quickly, and so I don't know, is it a systems issue, is it a process issue, is it a software issue sometimes? And so I, I, I think that. I think it doesn't need to be overly specific as to who comes up with the scale and scope of what an audit is because it should be a joint. Effort, things that concern the board that predominantly probably should tie to a future policy change potentially. But not, I don't think the board should be worried about whether I think bus maintenance included. Something that I'm worried about long term because I'm looking at multi-year funding. And when we go out, whether we lease buses and what types of buses, and if we do. Bus transportation, the things I would be looking at would just be so different. So I, I think it's fine that it's a joint effort to come up and not just the board or just the administration.
And, and if we looked at transportation, the board would be looking at that. We'd be looking for somebody to come in, take a review of the overall operations, tell us areas that we might be able to improve. We're jealous, other school districts have been jealous of A S D. Because we got so much of it contracted out, a limited portion, less a portion that's, that's, that's union public, you know, with the school district. So we're not blocked by the contractor, we're not blocked by the union for stopping it. Listen, we are, people are jealous of that when I met with other school districts and told them how we operate, so it's not going to be an issue that way. But looking for opportunities that there may be different type systems or something is, we would leave that open. Okay, and I see that as, what's a process? There are, I think, let me go back to the question that the chairman raised, and that is, should we have a separate committee is all we're talking about right now before we move forward with audits, we may want to do. I don't vote on the committee, but I'm very supportive of that for the reasons he said, I just think it makes a lot of sense that they'd have. They would devote time to it, sends it the positive message and the Governance Committee has.
President Bellamy?
Yes, thank you. Again, I don't think there's any dis- dis- dissension around having the audit committee. Right now, it falls under the Governance Committee, so when you say a standalone committee, are you changing our bylaws? To reflect a fourth committee? Or are we looking at the Governance Committee? Scheduling specific section sessions during the year specifically for audits?
My personal feeling is it would be best handled by a standalone committee. But it's also the case that there's some language in. Bylaws that needs to be changed. In addition, and I'm not sure what's in front of me isn't noted, whether it's policy or bylaws.
It's in our bylaws.
Right, what? The proposed change from Member Higgins, I'm not sure. Where it's destined for, whether it's policy, bylaws, and there is some, some language that exists.
Right now, it's, all I'm saying, Mister Chair, is that in order to have a, to add a committee. Which we can do, the board can do whatever it wants. You would have to change our bylaws to include a fourth committee. Now, we only have three committees, and that's Finance, Communications and Governance. Right now, Governance is where the audits fall. So if we are going to change, I, I think we should probably change our bylaws before we. May, maybe have a discussion on what that change will be if you are going to do it that way, if you're taking it out of Governance. And given it its own committee. Then that, that's, that's, that, that's a process that we'll have to clarify.
Correct. Number Higgins?
Yeah, I, I, well, I'm supportive of an internal operations audit committee, it's making clear it's not finance. And didn't want to include that. That's going to be a time consuming process because you're going to have to make the policy changes you go forward with it, you got two board meetings, all the other things going on. I think the Governance Committee should initiate and should continue this until the board makes a decision otherwise, so we can move forward. And, and then if we demonstrate how this thing can work positively. And get input from the administration before we finalize stuff and have that discussion. So I like the Governance Committee serving what the policies allow for it to be over, over, over. The internal operations audits at this point. But that we develop a plan that will establish an internal operations audit committee in the future. So we don't delay it while we go through this process and we'll be, be found out.
Madam Chair, Mister Chair, thank you, Mister Higgins, that, that clarifies it for me, and I do support exactly what you said.
Um, what I'm going to suggest, and I have to apologize for not looking at the agenda more thoughtfully prior to the meeting. The first item is what Member Higgins has proposed. I'm going to offer that, that we really can't vote on this because it. It doesn't say where in policy it goes or where bylaws it goes. And it doesn't change the specific language that exists right now that puts audits under governance. So to some degree, it's details, but. Details that take more than just a few minutes to try to work out in a meeting. What I had meant for this meeting to be today is a discussion of. Critical audits that, that the board might want to see go forward and begin soon. And in essence, proceed with the understanding it is the Governance Committee that, that owns. Operational audits. And, and look at, I mean, it's something we just simply haven't addressed, and I think we should. I'm going to entertain a motion that we table the School Board Operations Audit Committee proposal from Member Higgins. For some. To be altered, to establish where it goes in policy or in bylaws. And also add the amendments to bylaws and policy that would have to be made. To establish a standalone committee. In a couple of months when we, when we are back after Christmas break.
I have no objection, I appreciate that. And, and like I said, the only thing you can do is you can say, you know, the plan is to come back with something at a future date with some recommended language. And you'll put it on the audit initiative, on the, on the agenda.
If, if I don't hear any objection from anyone, that's what we'll do, is set this aside for modification to come back. And, and at that time have the discussion about a standalone committee versus governance. Any objection from anybody?
I have no objection.
And what I'm going to do is add an item three, which would be a discussion about audits, the. Operational audits that we feel like we should be looking at undertaking in the near future. That would put item two, the Joint School Board Assembly Resolution up next.
I, I, where is there a copy of this? I, I went back through my emails, I didn't see getting emailed a copy of this.
If I might, Mister Chair?
Uh, yes, President Bellamy?
Yeah, it was a work, it was a work, you may recall back in September. Member Donley, we, we agreed to join the Assembly for this work. Now the work is done and we're trying to get it on, on the agenda for. Before the first of the year, and so the work is just now completed. We can, we are going to send that out as, but we, we, but we've already agreed to it as a board, you have not seen it, but it will be forthcoming. Amanda is going to, do you have a copy you can put up today, Amanda, and then we will be sending it out to everybody? We just wanted the board to see. Or at least just to have a, a look at the work that's being done, and Amanda, if you can, you can just email it to everybody now if you'd like.
Okay.
It's, it's, this meeting actually saves us a little bit of time and keeps us on schedule for first and second reading, Member Donley, it's, which is what we were trying to do. So I apologize for not getting it out sooner, but it has been a work in progress. Member Lessons and Member Jacobs were our. Representatives on the Joint Task Force. And Member Lessons will be walking us through this today, and you will have a copy in your hand today. And then if it moves out, hopefully we move it out of committee for a first reading, thank you.
All right, well, thanks, I'll take the opportunity to unmute myself. So as President Bellamy shared, this is the.
Well, now I can't see it, it was up on the screen, but now I can't see it.
Member Donley, I stopped sharing my screen so that I can email it to you real quick, I just don't want all the emails displayed, so I will share it again in a second.
I'll talk a little bit of the background in the meantime, so as President Bellamy shared. This came out of our last joint meeting with the Assembly. Members Jacobs and President Bellamy and then three Assembly partners gathered. Three-ish, maybe more times on Zoom, also supported by our CFO, Andy Ratliff. And I think at the first meeting, there were one or more support personnel from the Assembly as well. And we talked about shared. Topics that, of shared importance. We received a great deal of specific information from Mister Ratliff. And is, the document is not quite up yet, but I will, the, the potential title is. A Joint Resolution of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly and Anchorage School Board. In Support of the Fair Inflation Adjusted State Funding Required to Maintain a Quality Public School System. And Increase Student Performance. Okay, and I see that it's up now. So I don't know if I should read through each of the points or talk about the general, maybe I'll just do the general arc. The, the shared value was that Assembly and board members agree that strong educational systems are a part of a healthy community. We looked at state law, we looked, or we looked at the Alaska State Constitution. We identified the foundation formula as the mechanism for funding our schools. We looked at, at national data for inflation between the start of the F Y seventeen school year. And this current school year. We traced adjustments to the base student allocation. In that time, we identified the district cost factor as something that is significantly out of date. We identified problems with flat funding for people transportation. We identified problems stemming from the change in school bond debt reimbursement. We identified problems. That have increased the structural deficit and decreased our purchasing power over the better part of a decade. And. We ended up, we also talked about, I'm on the second page now. The importance of stability in the, in, in funds that come through the foundation program versus occasional and unpredictable one-time funds. We talked about what the board and administration have done to minimize costs. Pursuing consolidation, promoting efficiencies, looking for new revenue opportunities. We discussed how we've attempted to minimize growth in wages in our bargaining units. We talked about the problems that minimizing bargaining unit growth in wages has. That have converged in our historic number of vacancies right now. We identified. That we have done, we, the collective board and boards that have come before us. Have over many years tried to maintain class sizes, tried to support academic achievement. Encouraged teacher retention, we've, I mean, it's just last year, we talked about. We established there was value in retaining our language immersion programs. We chose in our budgeting process last year for, for this current fiscal year, that yes, we were going to continue to support many of these valued programs. We looked at what we've done with our federal relief funds and identified using the deed portal. That more than a hundred and two million dollars of our total relief funds have simply been back allocated to backfill and maintain our pupil teacher ratios. Over, I think, four budget cycles. But that they will be running out. We looked at the structural deficit for F Y twenty-four and how it was settled. We mentioned and, and brought up the F Y twenty-five. Projection for the structural deficit, which is at a minimum of ninety-five million dollars, pending, as we've discussed, you know, labor negotiations. Student enrollment changes. And we came to. And then we also wanted to in, include the administration's point that has been made multiple times that we may be forced to eliminate. Up to six hundred and fifty or approximately six hundred and fifty positions this coming spring. If legislative action is not taken. if legislative action is not taken very soon in advance of our obligation to pass a balanced budget. And so we ended up coming, we we couldn't all of these things coalesced into essentially two resolutions. One was that we raised the base student allocation by no less than $1,655. So as to account for inflation since July 1st, 2016, and enable strategic investments and improve student outcomes. That 1655 figure, the bulk of that is 1625, which is the inflation adjusted figure. And then there's an additional $30 that would maybe go towards the Alaska READS Act, improved implementation. The second part of that first resolution is to increase transportation funding. And we bifurcated these really to say that this is how we stop the bleeding, to be a little bit crass. So we need these things to be done immediately. And then in that second resolution, we established that our shared goals would include the legislature passing additional legislation that would inju- that would adjust the BSA to account for inflation on an annual basis. That the legislature would direct and appropriate funds for that state-funded Iser study of the district cost factor. That legislation would be passed that would update the district cost factor on a triennial or no less than a triennial basis. And that the state would return to historic models of cost sharing for capital projects. So that is where I will pause.
Anyone else to speak or have questions? Member Higgins?
One comment, the 1655 was something that went through the Alaska Association of School Boards that was reviewed and supported by all the other school boards, improving that increase in line with this. So just to show consistent with the with the other school districts in the state, except Matsu doesn't just make that company, but everybody else.
Yes, thank you for that.
Miss, Mr. Chair.
Yes, President Bellamy.
Just just I just wanted to give kudos to Member Lessons and Member Jacobs and the Assembly members. Because they, on top of all that they had, of all the things that they had to do, they found time to get together to work out this resolution. And I think it really reflects our shared values, our our the uniqueness of Anchorage, as well as you know, just the overall just the overall state of of our finances. And so I I think you know, I I just think that for us to take a look at it, make sure if you have questions, please make sure we get them or you will have another opportunity to discuss and or we will discuss it at our joint meeting on the eighth. So but so there will be time. I don't know if the Assembly will want to make changes at that time, but if Board members would like to make changes at that time, that would also be another opportunity. So again, I just want to thank the team for some good work and the the administration, because we couldn't have gotten all the details correct without their input and support. Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion that we
I'm sorry, Andy, I had my mute on. I I wanted, I hadn't finished reading page two when it will, it was taken down and I'm trying to access the attachment to the email that came, but as you know, you can't just do it like any other normal attachment. You have to download it. So I've been trying to download it to a place I can find it. While all this is going on. And I still can't find where it's, oh, there it is. Okay.
We can hold
Okay. Now I've got it. Now I've got it in front of me. Go to page two. It's a lot to ask to read this large a document, you know, in less than two, three, four minutes, right? While while also listening to the testimony.
As a as a former legislator, I would think that would be easy.
No, I stopped things a lot of times so I could do that.
Yeah, go for it.
I'm going to call a five-minute recess while I fill my water bottle and make room for that. I'll be right back.
If I want to talk about
Scale FY twenty-four. Well, that's not true.
Okay. You're are, you're not muted.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But I'm happy to listen, but nobody else is.
Yeah, I got two things. Paragraph one, two, three, four, five. This is page two. Kelly, I I it says no other recourse. I don't think that's accurate. But I think the other, the substance of the paragraph other that is accurate. And then paragraph seven, where it says that it was unable to maintain its 202223 pupil teacher ratios. For, well, we were, but the board didn't accept my amendment to do so, to reduce administration and not to cut and other things, not to cut and not to increase the pupil teacher ratio. So I got factual questions about those two things, but everything else I'm okay with. Because I got to read the third page while while people were talking.
Maybe, thank you. I appreciate the feedback. Maybe while we're still in a technical recess. If you want to, if you want to raise alternate language and and come back with that in just a couple of minutes when others return.
Okay.
Member Donley, was that page two?
Two, paragraph five and paragraph seven.
Okay.
Okay.
And we, again, we will look at this document again with the Assembly on the eighth. So we will have you, to my calculation, there will be like three opportunities to for you to for all of us to 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 review, look at, and but I think whatever we agree to, the Assembly has to sign off on as well. Or whatever changes or edits we make, the Assembly will have to sign on.
Again, anyone wish to speak on the issue of the resolution?
Are we back on record, Andy?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I would, okay. Trying to, okay. If you've got, if I'm recognized and I'm looking at page two, paragraph five, we'd move to delete on line two, beginning it has has had no other recourse to has had no other recourse to term or the recourse and or the recourse and replace it with replace it to in order to so that the new language would read after fund balance in order to maintain student learning over each of the past four cycles. Which is syntax then is wrong. But I'm, what I disagree with is that there was no other recourse. I do think it it's appropriate to say that that we use the fund balance to maintain student learning over each of the past four cycles. But I don't agree with that. I think that's they were options. The 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 board chose that they were not as you know, there were no good options, but the board chose options. I don't think it was there was no other recourse. So what I'm trying to do is is take the no other recourse out of that paragraph, but keep the all the rest of the content in there. So there'd be have to be some syntax changes referred to each of the past four bullet cycles and to backfill maintains student learning. I guess it maybe remove the word and on line three might clean it up that way. Anyhow, I think I could do a conceptual amendment. They just took out the language has had no other recourse and then conform the grammar for the rest of the paragraph to conform with that.
May I, sorry?
Yeah. Ask the maker of the motion, Member Lessons, if that's an acceptable amendment or
I think very much so. And I would say, I would, I think I would propose to to that effect, it would read, you know, after fund balance has maintained student learning over each of the past four budget cycles by backfilling its growing general fund deficit, dot, dot, dot.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to get to. Yes.
Has maintained by backfilling. So I can send that language to Amanda. And then, Member Donley, you had another item you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, going down to paragraph seven on page two.
We'll be paused for just a second. Let Amanda make sure she's with us rather than asking her.
Yes, and also Member Jacobs joined at 2:30 and Member Wilson joined a little bit before that.
Wilson, okay. Okay, going, so we are accepting that change in language to be part of the main motion. And Member Donley, you had another item.
Yeah, paragraph seven. Line three, where it says it where we, after the comma, it reads meant that it was unable to maintain its 202223 pupil teacher ratio. I I I find that language troubling because I actually proposed the amendment that would have cut other things to allow us to maintain the the 2223 pupil teacher ratio. So it didn't mean we were unable to maintain it. It meant we were forced with difficult choices that resulted in us being unable to maintain. I think would be a more accurate factual statement there.
So after meant let's see. Let's see. Balanced budget. Comma, meant difficult choices. In order to, oh, wait, I I'll let you guys figure it out because my
What about simply adding after the 24th school year? You could say it makes it more conditional without eliminating valued programs.
I think that's true, Kelly. That'd be, that'd be, I, yeah, that that gets to what I'm getting to. I mean, there were very, there were horrible choices. There's no question about that, but there were choices. But I think, yeah, that addresses it properly, what you're proposing.
Great. I appreciate you bringing that up. Amanda, does does that make sense then? Just the the addition of those four words without eliminating valued programs?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that after FY twenty-four?
Yes, so right, it's after the unable to maintain 23, FY twenty-three PTRs for the FY twenty-four school year without eliminating valued programs, I am shorthand.
Awesome.
The rest of it I can live with, even though that I I'm not totally convinced about tying it to just inflation. I'd like to also tie it to performance, but but there's so much other good stuff in here that I think I'll just leave it at that for now.
Well, if I can continue, I appreciate the dialogue. I think it begs the question of the title of this document. Because right now, the tentative title was Amanda, could you please go to the first page just so everyone can see it? If you're able. Thanks. You know, a joint resolution in support of the fair inflation adjusted state funding required to maintain a quality public school system and increase student performance. I think that what we've learned from the Picasa Autumn Studies is that actually to increase student performance requires a significantly larger scale of investment than adjusting the base student allocation for inflation over the past eight years.
Other comments, questions? Debate?
So so I guess I would, I guess to that point, I would say I'd be okay with deleting the and increase student performance because in my heart, I'm not sure that just a an inflation adjustment is going to do. It'll do a lot, but it's not going to do more than we have right now. Again, we're look, this is, this is stopping the bleeding. So I guess I would propose, I would propose that we delete increased student
Yeah. Proposal is in the heading of the resolution to strike the words and increase student performance. And I could ask the maker if that's a friendly amendment. I take it it would be.
Yeah, that it's it's a friendly amendment, and I'd be delighted to hear other people's reflection.
Anyone else have comments just on that area for the moment?
My thoughts is it's probably more accurate than the existing title, but at the same time, I really believe the increased funding should come with increased accountability.
Anyone else have input?
Mr. Chair. I I guess I would like to hear from a a member, I think I heard from Member Lessons, but I don't know if Member Jacobs, because they were at the table with the Assembly when they were having having the the discussion. And so I I I'd just like to hear what their thoughts are. Please, thank you.
Mr. Chair. So this is, this is Member Jacobs. Can you have the floor briefly?
Member Jacobs is requesting.
Oh, Member Jacobs, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I I understand the the sentiment behind deleting the language. How I read the the Picasa Autumn Report kind of speaks to what we need to to transformationally change K-12 education to make it more nimble, flexible and and improve outcomes long-term and be a system that embraces some of the innovation that we see in our charter schools and some of the academic successes they're able to obtain. I I don't necessarily agree. I don't think that the report also stipulates that a increase to the BSA won't have positive impact on student outcomes. I I think that even with, and I think data we reviewed in board meetings has showed that even with funding that has decreased with inflation, our outcomes have improved. I'll I'll speak to, last fall, we reviewed the first AK-Star assessment data. And for the first time in anyone in our boardroom's recent memory, to include some pretty amazing subject matter experts, ASD was at the head of the pack of the large five school districts in the reading and math proficiency or reading math growth, I think that was tested. And so we've, we've had some successes there despite the stagnant and decreasing support from the state, especially when accounting for inflation. And so I I think that the the sentiment is well-intended for sure. I think if you were to ask our superintendent Um, I, I think that the, the sentiment is well intended for sure. Um, I think if you were to ask our superintendent. He would say that. Uh, the administration or educators will never stop working to utilize every available resource, um, to. Improve student outcomes and that's where our focus should be. So that's, that's kind of where my head and heart are at. Thank you.
And, and just from my clarification, were you in favor of or against the change in language?
No, I would prefer that we keep, um, the existing language. Uh, although I do understand the sentiment and I think the more that we can express what member lessons did, which is that. We should have at some point a transformational, um, our conversation regarding transformational change. In capable of education and what that looks like from a funding perspective, that conversation needs to be had, but I don't think that removing that language unfortunately gets us. To a place where that conversation is more likely and unfortunately could also be taken out of context. So I would prefer we keep the, 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 the language in. Thank you.
And, and I'm gonna weigh in basically and agree with member Jacobs, um. You know, if, if the system's maintained from year to year, you do look to increase student performance. I, as an educator coming out of classroom, I, a lot of times I like to compare things to diesel fuel. Um, if you're gonna run the same district the next year, it's not so much the price of diesel fuel, you're having a certain number of gallons you gotta buy. And, and the price is kind of what it is. We don't fund our classrooms that way. Um, so if diesel fuel goes up a bunch. Mister Anderson's got to figure out and Mister Alveg got to figure out some way to pay for it. And by the time you get through with that, you may or may not have a lot of time or energy left to innovate. Um, you've just done what you had to do to get back to the surface. And I, I feel the same thing happens in the classroom if each year it is a struggle just to get something like. You had a year before, you don't spend as much time improving what you do as you would if you could just assume. You could have about the same number of students in the same amount of time, the same resources to work with that you did previous year. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of leaving the language as it was presented to us on that. Anyone else wish to speak to this particular issue?
I'd like to hear how member lessons response to those comments.
Number lessons?
I, uh, continue to appreciate the chance to collaborate. I. Can live with, um. I can live with the title as it is and. The point is well taken that our educators are always working to increase student performance, um. I would really like to have a conversation about. Sort of the scale of transformation needed though, or the scale of funding, um, needed to. To implement the transformation, I think, um, everybody in the room would really like to see, um, so I'm. I'm fine removing the friendly amendment. Um, I am proud of the collaborative work that went into the document. Appreciate the ongoing, um, chance to collaborate, uh, today, uh, right now and, um. Look forward to meeting with the assembly partners, uh, in another week, um, to hopefully move this forward.
If, if no one wants to call for a vote, say that we've agreed to keep the language as it was presented in the original document.
In paragraph seven, is that right?
Uh, no, this is the title.
Title.
Oh, the title, okay, got it.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other grammatical changes or concerns about the document itself? And, uh, Mister Lang?
I have just one small detail that I'd offer up member lessons, um, and that is, uh, I think it's paragraph. Three on page two, where we list out those positions where we've had difficult time staffing. Um, it leaves out probably our single largest pool of vacancies, which is our paraprofessionals. So small detail, I don't know if it's worth altering, but right now we currently have a hundred fifty-seven vacancies in those positions. And it's by far our largest, so it might be one we're singling out. So I would off, right after classroom instruction, maybe. Adding an additional item in that list, including paraprofessional support.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and appreciate the comment, um, and I guess I apologize for the oversight. That's certainly something that we know about.
Mister Chairman, for the purposes of debate, I would so move.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Without objection, paraprofessionals will be inserted into there. And, and I will say, in my experience, they are very aware of the fact that they are often overlooked and they will appreciate that Mister Lang has included. Um, any other suggestions on language or changes?
I had flagged an errant comma that, at the bottom of page two, after performance standards, and so hopefully we can delete that, but that's just a minor thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, as it happens, we, we will be moving this to be presented to the board, so there will be another opportunity if, um. Anyone sees something, it needs to be wordsmithed between now and when it does come to the full board. Um, hearing no other comments, seeing no one walking to the microphones. All those in favor of sending this to the board for their consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I, I, I.
Anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, uh, that is passed and will go to the full board. That brings us to item three that I inserted into the agenda, which is consideration. Of, um, specific operational audits that the governance committee needs to look at at this time. And member Higgins would like to speak.
Uh, I, I think this is one that has to be jointly worked out, but the, the, the committee can go to the superintendent and express. What we're considering, your feedback from the superintendent as well as other issues. The one issue is just the scope of different audits. I mean, um, you know, should we have in the future a special education audit? These the superintendents express interest in that, for example, and that coming from him would make sense. Uh, there are other operational issues where we might see some benefits. I know there's an audit right now, insurance, I, uh, medical. Uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. From my standpoint, there are two audits I think could have high priority. One is. And it's not so much of an audit as it is a review, the process for processing employee concerns that are, um, uh, within the system. Because there were a, a couple of issues. One, is it well understood how it can be done? What type of communications have taken place in the past? I have seen communications that basically you have a problem superintendent. Change school, I mean, principal changed schools, he had no place to report it, and then it was dismissed. That was within the last five years. So I personally saw that trying to help a, a teacher at one point. But there were issues out there and there was a chilling effect. If people are afraid to report. Students, right, we hear that. The scope of that, I'm not reaching any conclusions, but a, an audit of that would, my standpoint, one. Evaluate the current system of what we've got, come out with recommendations to establish a issue that there was an open door policy. That will address it and accountability for that process. It's not a big deal. Uh, it's something that somebody big on employee concerns, investigations and processes. Come in, they would be taking some stuff off the shelf, they would ask some questions in regards to it, the purpose of the script. Is not to evaluate past, uh, issues. Wouldn't want to do that, it's not necessary. But we need to assess to current state of how comfortable and what process is there and what we can do to establish for better. So I think that's a, that's, it's, it's called an audit, because we're auditing the process, but we're not going into any of the details in that. So I think it's a really low volume type activity. The second one is procurement. There were issues in regards to whether or not we're using professional services contracts, right? That's been an issue came up with West High School, uh, would cost us close to a million dollars, what we've been processed when we shouldn't have. There's been other issues in regards to, uh, kind of, uh, conflicts of interest that has been addressed and basis intended. Uh, and, um, I would question some other issues in regards to personal services contracts. Uh, within that, because we've got state laws there, when people retire, when they come back, what the provisions on all that, I think all that. Just looking at the policies, looking at compliance would be the issue, but there would be a few specific areas. Such as professional services contracts or the procurement process that's being used, uh, within that. Uh, and I think, uh, that audit would be a little more extensive. Because it would have to say, what have we got professional services for the last five years or what have we got here or not? So there would be some more work to be done with that, um, but I think it's very beneficial because that is big dollars. And there was potential big benefits to make you sure that that's what we're right, okay? Uh, and I, I have concerns about interpretations of professional services that I've heard. And I don't know, for example, with medical, we never had, we've got a contract for medical, we just keep extending. Without a process that has taken place, what do we need in the future? That's a procurement issue too, though. It's not just at HR, that's procurement, uh, as to what that policy should entail and. That needs to be addressed and if we need to make changes in the policies to ensure that in the future, then that should come out of that audit as well. Uh, if that's an issue. So I think the employee concerns aspect of it is one, the second one is procurement. And, and there are others out there we can just list or review in the future as well. You know, special ed is just one, uh, training and development with resources, what we, I don't know, all the different things we're doing for implementing new. Uh, curriculums, you name it. But we got a lot of administrator operation audits, type processes we need to look at. I remember one where we did it with. Through service that requested because their, their place was falling apart. They couldn't find replacement pieces. Or equipment and we could have been shut down for months with the food service and, and we got involved with that, not first, but then the administration. So there are a lot of issues out there. You, you look for departments that are not necessarily where you know there's an issue. We could look at insurance as an issue just because we spent six million dollars more, we needed money for this, to say, let's take a look at it. Without even knowing there were some issues that were there, without even knowing the, the limitations, the stock gap measures and all that kind of stuff. Uh, that could have been, we will look at it and then it would have been reviewed. So I think audits are not necessarily looking for where you think they got a problem, it's looking for areas where you want to make sure that you're not missing opportunities. And you may be able to improve opportunities, okay? Um, when we did a pyramid policy before about ten years ago. Or twelve years ago, I guess, uh, yeah, twelve, fourteen years ago, we, it was a peak point, we saved a lot of money and that was an issue that was out there. So, and we knew that, went and said, what can we do? And procurement was behind it as well, okay? So we had support in, in finance. So I would like to propose that we, the board identify two issues, one is. Employee concerns, one is procurement audits, we then ask the administration through next governance committee. To address the issue of any, of what they may have, the standpoint of audits or priorities, but we're jointly doing this. And so ask the administration superintendent to give us a recommendations on what audits should be on the list now and in the future. And any, uh, concerns in regards to the scope of the audit, so that we have that discussion. Cause I don't want, I do not want the, I do not want this board directing audits without. A good, uh, open discussion, because the superintendent may identify areas that we wouldn't have identified. The benefit of the coming out of the governor's zone is that the auditor knows conflicts or issues, it comes, it comes back here. For resolution if there is a conflict. I don't see that ever happening, okay? Even on the everyday map, it wasn't a conflict, it was just what are we doing? So it was never an issue in regards to that findings or the scope of it was done properly or restricted. That's never been an issue and I can never see that happening. Uh, we're bringing in professionals from other law school districts and that I've never seen anything negative. But, uh, I would propose those two audits to be presented to the superintendent for review and comment. And also based upon the scope which I just discussed, and then. Uh, ask for a review of all the different departments that might be there. Um, yeah, transportation may be one. Do I think there's a problem in transportation? No. Uh, but it's just because you want to audit all audits, you're all departments over some type of rotation period. One time the, the members of board wanted to be able to do audits enough so that every department get audited every, at least once every three years, that's massive. Uh, I, I, I thought that would have been overboard like big time, but that was what the board thought when I got on the board, that's what they thought should be done. Because there were too many opportunities out there, improvement, too many changes taken. So, um, yeah, I think we need a thorough curriculum audit that's supposed to be done every six years or something. The state and all these provisions, looking at audit, looking auditing the curriculum to see for compliance or fidelity is not looking at. Curriculum, we're looking at the total curriculum, the integration, uh, and that would address things such as, um. Uh, the delivery, uh, there were, versus the computers, with a paper and other things, because we're looking at audit. Uh, I think that's probably a high, high priority. If we're gonna deal with academic outcomes, audit is there. But I ain't pushing that at the top because that takes money to implement, we ain't got it. Uh, who can I say? But I think that looking at an audit, uh, comprehensive audit review, which is something that's supposed to be done every six years with so far behind. Um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, whatever time it was that we ever had a thorough, that was a big deal. And I will mention that in regards to that, with the fact, I think, I think it was, um, um, twenty sixteen. When we got some data and did some reviews, they saw that academic outcomes in some schools. Like third grade met reading or something was poor, but it was poor throughout and they decided that was a curriculum issue. So there was data there showing. We just didn't do a thorough review. So I would ask the superintendent to provide important ones to long-term schools, such as special ed. And act in, in curriculum or two that I think should be on that list for the future, but I would propose starting with, um. Open door policies and practice practices and the other one is a procurement.
Um, anyone else have suggestions for areas that, that could be subject to audit review?
Mister Chair, I, I, um, and I think member Higgins suggested it already, um. I think, I, I know that there's some things already in the works that, that, that the superintendent. And already has in the works and I don't know exactly what those are, but. Um, perhaps we could get an idea of that as well, what, what's already kind of in, happening. I don't know if anybody in the room knows. Cause I know the superintendent's not here today.
He actually just, I think, so he is on.
Oh, okay. So I, it, do we know what's already in the works? Um, it, because I, I don't disagree with anything that member Higgins has. Suggested. But if there's something already in the works, I, I would like to know what that is as well, because it would not be the first time the superintendent. Has heard this desire around audits, so I, and I, I can imagine that he would have just been, um, complacent on it.
And, and I'll also say that, um, I, I don't know exactly how this process begins. Um, but it is under the governance committee and, and I'm the chair. So I, I presume the first step would be a meeting, um. Between myself, President Bellamy and the superintendent, uh, really to discuss what you're talking about. To see if, if the effort, if it's already been done or someone has looked at it, um, that would be information. To factor into how the audit would be structured, uh, or possibly realize that, uh, uh. Additional audit may not be needed. So I would see that as a first step if we do decide to go ahead with any kind of an audit today. Um, that, the, the three of us will sit down and look at what has been done recently and. Um. Look at how to get as many ideas in from staff and, uh, board members on what they, they want to have looked at. Um, but yeah, I, other than, than going to the ombudsman, I don't know of a kind of way that boys. Get concerns in, in a meaningful way, um, and procurement's more of a mystery to me than it probably should be. On both of those issues, so it, uh. I, I'll have to do some research and consult with both of you about how this whole process starts, if in fact we do vote to go ahead with it.
Okay.
And anyone else have suggestions on particular topics? And you may want to look at the sheet that, uh, had past audits on.
I think, I think more you can provide some information in regards to the insurance audit, the medical issue. I think, I think Morty can provide some information in regards to the insurance audit, the medical insurance audit, because that's one that's certainly taking place. Using the Council of Great City Schools, right? And what that process is.
Uh, I suppose it was.
I must. Oh. Okay, my hearing aid, I won't hear anything and I'll speak quieter. What I was gonna say is that um I know that the district is doing an audit over the insurance plans. And uh I was gonna ask Morty to give us an update on that one as to what the status is, because they're using the Council of Great City Schools. Which is a very cost-effective way of doing it. I I think that's, they were gonna find that out. This is their first process. Uh for somewhat new people that haven't been involved with the audits in the past. So if you can give us an update on what audit is being done, scope, I would appreciate it.
Sure, and I'll just speak really briefly, but we did have an audit team here, a review team from the council, November twelfth through the fifteenth. They brought up an impressive group, they brought up eight different individuals, and then they had three additional folks participating via Zoom. And it was more than just looking at insurance, it was looking at our entire sort of benefits department, including the different uh. Benefits that we provide to employees, the efficiencies and operations of that department. And to your point, Member Higgins, they did uh look specifically at the timelines and the processes that we use for procuring the different services. That follow their sort of that health insurance, medical insurance umbrella, so. Um we're, they're right now still soliciting information from us following that in-person visit. And um I'm guessing it'll be sometime in spring semester that we get the findings back from that particular review.
And I would ask that you provided the scope of that contract. Just like the cut of the audit, because we haven't had a chance to be engaged in that. That's been a concern that I've raised. Uh that we, you know, there could be issues in there that may or may not be addressed. For example, I know in the past procurement has viewed insurance as a professional service, that's what I was told. And so that would be exempt from the purchasing policy. And that's a concern for for the cost involved, that you do that or that it's not a product and not a service. So that would be more of a procurement audit, but it impacts this this particular audit as well.
They they were pretty broad ranging in their questions, um but I can certainly provide the scope document and working with this meeting.
And you have an idea of the cost?
Uh it was forty-five thousand dollars, it's a fly rate, so maybe I have to provide some food butter here, but it's, it is pretty low cost.
Could give that to anything else.
Any other questions specific on the medical uh review that Mr. Wang spoke of? Um again, back to the floor for anyone that has suggestions about audit areas that should be audited. Hearing no discussion on that, um what I would do is take these independently. Uh it's been, two areas have been proposed, uh one is pathways for employee concerns. Uh what I'd like to do is open the floor for discussion about whether or not we should move to undertake. That audit, starting in the near future.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, President Bellamy.
Um, okay, I guess I would love, what would be helpful for me is if I knew what we were doing now. And I don't know if it's possible for the staff to give us an overview of what we're doing now. Uh I just to kind of, I mean, if we had an audit, what what do we, are we, is it employee relations we're auditing? Is it EEO? Is it compliance? I mean, what what is it that we're? What will we be auditing? And then it, and and but most importantly for me right now, what are we currently, where are the pathways? For employees to resolve their issues without going back to um. Um prin- principal or their principal who could be the issue or to um. Having to go outside. I mean, is there, what are the pathways for employee? Uh uh con- consults or resolution of issues before? Yeah, you know, I know, I know what it was eight years ago, but I don't know what it is now, so. I think there's been some restructuring, and I don't know uh what that restructuring really looks like. So uh I think it's, I think employee pathways for, you know, looking at complaint resolutions or problem solving for employees. Is good, uh but I just don't know what we're currently doing, what we think we're currently doing and whether or not it's working.
Uh, Tim, your first question, I think Member Higgins can correct me if I'm wrong. This is specifically uh when employees have raised a concern uh in any area. But their immediate supervisor either disagrees or takes a direct and what. What other pathways exist for them to go forward in a way that that they're comfortable with and.
Neutral.
Exists right now, I will refer to Mr. Wang and ask for his input.
Sure, um and I can certainly provide a write-up for or connect that kind of walks through this more specifically. People want to go and and see some of the different resources that are available to staff, but there's really three primary pathways for an employee. Um you know, one is the chain of command, which would usually start with their principal or supervisor. Um if the complaint is about the principal or supervisor, then they can always go a step above that and um and, you know, forward the complaint there. Um the second process is through Employee Relations Office, um they have an intake process for inquiries. Um about concerns, they review it through a an internal flow chart and process. And then um for those that have merit, they do pick those up and conduct investigations on behalf of employees. Or work towards resolution at the job site, if that's the more appropriate pathway. Um then the third, this isn't really uh specific to staff, is the citizen complaint process. We do have a fair number of uh folks internally who find their way to that process when they're not sure where else to land. And every year, as part of our required training series, an employee has to go through the EEO training module. And in that module, there is very specific guidance about all three of those processes, or at least two of those processes. And how an employee can navigate that, you know, process if they're unsure, and especially if they're unsure, if they're unwilling to take that to their immediate principal or supervisor.
Uh, Member Higgins?
Yeah, and I appreciate the response. Let me say this, that the pathways available to employees are only as good as if the employees know it. And in in the past history, hasn't all been supportive of those processes. So you can have a reluctant to go forward or because retaliation has taken place before. I have seen in the last year and a half, heard questions about people raising concerns, it might be a problem employee. And what kind of message would it send to to the to the staff if we overturn against a principle, overturn something? So I heard that from an administration perspective. So the, so the concerns about retaliation or concerns about raising concerns, future is a chilling effect. Doesn't happen overnight, that happens over a period of time. And addressing that and getting an open door policy where if you're not comfortable going to your supervisor for any reason. You have someplace else you can follow, you can go up the chain of command if you want to. It's a common approach, having an open door policy. Your supervisor up the chain of command or going to a third party, the H O is always viewed as a second, a second source. But you don't go to coworkers, you don't go to this, you don't go to that. But overcoming a chilling effect is a time-consuming process. Because people have experienced or seen or heard of of issues not being handled, maybe in a way that's. Has included uh not being supportive, retaliating or dismissive. And it makes it uncomfortable because of the risk factors associated. Um Palaverty Nuclear Plant, when they had the chilling effect, it took five years to overturn it. When they had a champion at the top, it takes time. And some managers supported it, some don't. But identifying and addressing what is the issue is part of an audit team. Identifying and reviewing, what are the steps needed to be able to address it, including policies or procedures or reporting and accountability? So that there's some, some addressing these issues and what's the feedback we provide to employees or we do not. All that type of approach is pretty standard in an open door policy. Um uh and, you know, you, it's not that difficult to find, I set it up for a nuclear plant. But it is important, it's critical, uh from a safety standpoint, if those issues. Um uh the safety of kids, of of staff, everybody, it allows it. Raise a concern to a principal and the principal doesn't want to follow through with it. You're putting everybody at risk if there's no other avenue and the district doesn't look into it. And I know four years ago, five years ago, they weren't doing that, because I saw that, was told that by the administration, and that doesn't get reversed overnight. Because you have a lot of employees that here already knew things, they're saying the same thing they said five years ago and it wasn't true, and not the trust. So I appreciate, I get feedback from H O and we, uh the superintendent in regards to a uh for your request, and I appreciate that. But I also think it doesn't address the issue, thinking audit coming and would be able to look at it, assess it, say, these are things you need to do. It's a historical problem, so it isn't going to go away quickly without additional steps. You can't keep doing the same thing you've been doing, expect it to change, people are voting on that assessment. Go do, go to, go to teachers and say, if you have a principal problem, your principal, would you go to and see if they know the answer? Um uh I have, uh nobody does, we heard that from the COE, the union president, saying this is a big issue. And I I would like to, we should all be on the same page. Employees, administration and and the board, this shouldn't be even a discussion about what we want to do. The question is, how do we get there? And I think that's it, it's open door policy, how do we get to the point that employees feel comfortable? Uh hence raising concerns in multiple locations, and they do it and that is handled appropriately.
Anyone else wish to speak to this? Seeing no hands, I I will say that um concerns about retaliation and fear of making ways. Is something that's existed in district for a very long time. And to some degree, it exists in any workforce, I mean, people, people hesitate to make official complaints. Uh they complain all the time, but in terms of like actually trying to do something about it, a lot of people are very hesitant. Um even if we have systems that we thought were working okay, I can see this as as something worth looking at. Just in, maybe districts that have systems in place that work a lot better. And I'm, I frankly don't know for sure, um this is the only district I've ever worked in, so my, my vision is limited on it. Um but I would, I would vote in favor of us pursuing this uh as a way to get. Uh outside eyes looking at our processes and telling us how they measure off to, to what else is out there. Anyone else wish to speak on it? Hearing no one, um I would put it to a vote of whether or not we undertake an employee concerns and pathways audit. Um again, overseen by the governance committee. Um. Of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, say no. And I'm not hearing any nays. Um so that is on the agenda, and again, it'll start with a. Um sit down with myself, President Bellamy and Superintendent Bryant. Uh to talk what, you know, get the full story of what we are doing right now and where we need to go. Uh the other item that has been suggested is procurement. And um Number Higgins has spoken to that, undoubtedly he will speak to it again before this meeting is over. Cause he should jump in front of that before he gets a, gets recognized by the chair.
So uh, ma- Mr. Chair, I I'm I'm just, it's just a clarification. Procurement, the, I mean, is it just our, is our process, it's not, for some reason, that seems uh. Financial to me, but maybe I'm just wrong in my thinking and I don't know enough about procurement. It sounds like it's a financial audit, but uh how is it different than a financial audit, I guess is my question?
Uh the, it's not the financial books, it's the processing of acquisition of goods and services. And uh it is a split organization for a reason, waiting from finance, so it's not. Huh? It's not a CFO now, okay. Um but it's on stuff on the different departments, but it it's not, could it ever be a financial audit? Yeah, but we're looking for really process in regards to this. We written up a detailed policies that came from top people in the country. Uh a policy and and they wrote the policies, that was really cool. And um the question or application of the policies, we uh comply with professional services contracts. Or do, or how are we addressing conflict of issues, conflict of interest issues that have come up in the last couple of years that I'm familiar with? I don't know any look, whether we looked into it or not, but there were issues there. Um but the procurement processes are big dollars. And uh whether or not we are uh following those policies or whether or not we need to make changes to address the. Uh to put safeguards when you have conflicts of interest or some other thing, needs to be looked at, that's from my perspective. But it is a compliance within the policies or the interpretation of those policies, whether or not they're reasonable. Um I have, I've been involved in the development of those policies. I can tell you the auditors that were here at the time that wrote that, the two from West, uh from, I don't know, um. Virginia and some other place that in in DC, um they would have, they would strongly disagree. Uh from their information to me, so I think there are serious issues here. But it needs to be looked at from a compliance and if there needs to be clarification in the policies to prevent that kind of issue. Or to say it's not an issue, is an audit issue. And because it's big dollars, West um um, you know, West High School is a good example. That was an emergency acquisition, should have done it. We had issues of professional services that are, that are current issues. Um the the insurance is a great one, medical. Uh but there were a number of issues about compliance within the policies that I think, just a general overview, the interpretation. We've had applications recent past that would take a look at it, rather than address it with concerns, it's looking forward. They would look at this, but only to say there were some areas for improvement in the policies and procedures and changes of application. That's what the audit would do. And I think that's a fair way of looking at it, because it's constructive rather than critical. And but it can't ignore the issue and say, wait a minute, why are we looking at? Well, if you got an application that looks like it's there and they agree with it, it's dead. If they don't agree with it, they can recommend how we change it.
Any other comments, questions on this issue? Hearing, seeing none, um I would add as a member of the committee that uh procurement is probably something. The board ought to understand better than it does, um I know we don't look at it too closely ever, but uh. We're multi-hundred billion dollars a year and the, the. I'm sorry, second.
Member Jacobs says this.
Uh, Member Jacobs, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, just a, a quick clarifying question on process. Um I understand that the next step of the, after kind of today's conversation and informal thumbs up as a committee. Um to send this word forward is for a conversation for you as chair, President Bellamy and the superintendent to sit down. And kind of identify next steps, is part of that seeking out kind of a formal proposal? For uh the audits with a written out scope um by the identified. Um contractor with a specified cost and then returning with that information to the committee. Um I guess going two steps ahead, can we describe what that process looks like, since this is new to all of us?
Sure, and and I say that not ever having gone through the process myself, but um. Yes, meeting uh with the superintendent and president and kind of scoping it out. And then before we could move, I think it would have to come back to the board, um. Given that all these things do have a fiscal cost attached to them. Um we know a little bit more about what we do in Anchorage. And of course, part of the the audit process is finding out what other districts do across the country. So before it actually happened, I would see it coming back to the committee at least. If not the full board for review to make sure it fit within the scope and the cost, um. You know, we're, we don't know exactly what what we're looking at in terms of dollars at this, at this moment.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, if I might follow up?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um so with that said, I, yeah, I think um the two topics we've identified are are worthy ones to start with. Um I would like to see kind of, we haven't, we're not, we're, we're discussing kind of conceptual. Um topics and conceptual scopes for a conceptual audit, so we still need something. Um topics and conceptual scopes for a conceptual audit, so we still need something in writing. Um that I I think you've identified a process for to go before the the full board for um the approval on the fiscal side, which I think is reasonable too. Um and I would support those two topics being kind of among the first. The other thing that I hope you as chair and President Bellamy and Superintendent Bryant consider is, I I don't know. Um you know, what resources exist or if there's a plan to have simultaneous audits done or have one follow the other, but. Um I want to make sure that while we're providing this transparency and accountability, we're not um. Subjecting staff to um duties that would prevent us from accomplishing. The academic outcome focused priorities we've set as a board, and so I I definitely want us to consider that fact too. Um I I really am happy with where our goals and guardrails are. Right now as a district, at least in terms of the overall focus, and so I don't want to sacrifice that. Um or put that in 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 a serious jeopardy, and so wanted to keep that lens on there too, thank you.
Sure, and and I would comment that uh, well, I think these are important, they need to happen, they're not urgent and they. Um it shouldn't pull staff off of more critical day-to-day work, um. These are things that will take months at the very least uh to make happen, it's just a matter of getting them started, laying off the groundwork, moving ahead with it for the long term. Any other comments, questions, may, uh member Higgins?
One other comment, you know, with one, when you generally look for the audits, we got a whole list of departments, make sure you don't miss anything, you can look through it. But one of the things that we looked at in the past was we get the Council of Great City Schools reports on how we are doing. In operational rank to other Council of Great City Schools, so we end up on Portail, with midpoint, um you know, food service to. To transportation, but to all the areas we're doing, and it gives a pretty good report, and so looking at opportunities for audit. Where we, in in some cases, it so be it, uh we're paying more for fuel than I don't care. Uh but in other areas, it may show us as being an area for improvement or an area that we might want to explore. So you got, look at the whole list of departments and operations, say, wait, what's in here, is anything in here? But then look at the uh how well we're doing, at one time, the the board had adopted with the superintendent's recommendation of goal. Being in the top quartile for each of these operational areas, it wasn't realistic, but what the heck, it looked good. Uh but it is good to look at when we're way down on the list, we've been real late, laid down on food service for a long time. Participation and all that kind of stuff, we've been real low on some of the other areas. I think the board, if the committee could get back a report from the administration, share the Council of Great City Schools report. On operational efficiency, right to other things, that would provide a basis for the next. Governance committee to, when we look at that, that they would have a chance to look at that and discuss it with the superintendent.
Andy, if I could speak, so during COVID, like a lot of districts in Council of Great City Schools. Um KPIs quit being done because there were so many operations uh across the country. That just weren't, they weren't being done, nothing was normal anymore. Um so we made the decision to restart KPIs this spring, and I think it's Aprilish. That we submit the KPIs, um I can't remember the deadline, I think it's April. So we won't see our first look compared to the other Council of Great City Schools. Until the fall annual conference in DC. Where they published the the book where you got to know your school code, which I think most of us. Know the school code, but if we were to look at it right now, what we would see is KPIs weren't published for three years. And we would only be able to compare ourselves to prior to COVID, which was the spring of nineteen. So it it wouldn't be, so much has happened since the spring of nineteen that. Um it it's almost that kind of look, it, I I don't know how it could be done by the next governance meeting, but I do think when. The fall council meets in DC, when they publish all of that, um. That's an appropriate time to share with everyone as to where you stand, and and I know you brought up student nutrition, I actually fought with the council for. Um three or four years trying to change their KPIs, because they make no sense. It was things like, what is your percentage of uh free and reduced? And that was a major KPI for them, and I kept going to the council saying, so what are we supposed to do, make people lose their jobs to have less money? So now kids qualify, because we were actually getting hit compared to like Atlanta, right?
Yes, we did.
Because we didn't have enough economically disadvantaged students, so some of the KPIs. You you really got to understand what KPIs you're looking at, and when you just look at like the overall. Like here's student nutrition in ASD and you'll see like where they stand against the other districts, but you really do have to know. What are all those individual KPIs that go to make up how well we stand overall, because there's a lot of KPIs that frankly. Um are, they're they're, they they don't really apply to us for so many reasons, and it's that way with. Custodial, it's that way, because they do their number of square feet with the number of people you have and the number. What they don't do though is what's the quality of the schools, so unless you really understand all of these KPIs and what they, when they score you. What it really means, you can, you can come up with the wrong perspective of like custodial, we we've been. We couldn't hire custodians, we had sixty vacancies last year, we have thirty right now, because we we had the collective bargaining agreement. But now, when we do our KPI this spring, we're going to show thirty less custodians than we actually need, we're going to look great. But we only look great because we can't hire people. And so all of those KPI things, I think it it takes, this take me years to understand how to read the council's report. And to actually be able to look at what looks really good, might be bad, and what looks bad might actually be okay.
I I can see where they might uh feel like a district's not trying hard enough to qualify people for like free and reduced.
Right, but you get the CEP program, and this this is my, because I I went direct with, uh what's what's the?
Robert.
Robert, somebody told you to with Robert on this one. And and I said, but the federal government tells us the second the schools have CEP, we can't collect any information, yeah, that's a problem. So but but when the KPI was developed, it was before CEP came out. And then they didn't go back and actually, so all across, as I looked at the KPIs last spring. Because we had some draft stuff coming in and I was looking at. Um especially, I, not that I didn't care about the CEO KPI, you know, but I did care, I just didn't know what they were. Then I started looking at them and I started realizing that when you have sixty vacant custodian positions, you're rocking it in the council. But that's horrible, and and so you, I think by chief, we've really got to know. What is being measured and you just got to accept some of them don't matter.
I I will say this, first of all, I would like to see it from three years ago, four years ago, see what, see what it was back then.
It's published on the council's website.
Okay, I know, but I thought the administration would go ahead and provide it with the board and just let it see it, but um uh within it, but. Um I I I know when I went through discussions with the discussions about custodial was, but it snows here. And of course Minnesota and Portland and Portland, Maine and others, so what, uh that's okay. Um I I heard different reasons why, without saying, wait a minute, is this an opportunity? I'm not looking to try to say it's bad news, I'm just saying it's potentially a window.
I'm only bringing it up because we have a lot of new board members who came on and don't have fifteen, twenty years' experience looking at it. So when you look at the KPIs, it does take like a deep dive to know what you're even looking at, and it took me years.
Yeah, Detroit has ninety percent plus uh free and reduced, so you you you're lucky, Georgia would be better than any place also, you know.
Yeah, we rocked it, and we were horrible.
Yeah, but I mean, I I understand all that, I'm just looking at, saying, when we looked at the food service, we saw. The places where they ate and Bartlett became a big issue, if we could make changes there, I thought it would improve things, I don't know if it did. Uh but other issues, we still saw opportunities, even when it wasn't there, the fact that then I need new meals, but you got Subway within the school, so be it, that's that's the difference. But an objective third party coming in there would be able to see the same thing and say, wait a minute. You're not measuring how many people are really eating, you just see what they eat at yours versus the place right next to you. Um and they would draw different conclusions, so I don't think the numbers to me mean that much, but they do point to an opportunity. To look at and say, this is an area where we can prove it, so I don't want to see this year's KPIs or last year's, I'd like to see it three years ago. Or four years ago, whatever the last one.
We can put the link in BC, everyone can pull it up, it's like common knowledge, open to everybody. Um we'll put the school code so you know what to look up, but it's, it's really easy to look up, it's just. I just wanted to point that out, because people who don't know, who haven't had the pleasure of spending hours looking at KPIs. To look at the definitions of the KPIs to see. It it could just be deceiving, because it, these graphs look pretty. And but then you got to look at each individual one and realize that some of them, we don't. But I tell you, I looked at the council's student nutrition um thing, it's been eight years, I thought it was a great audit, personally.
I think the, it's a good, it's a good tool, because it it's only an indication of where may be an opportunity. And I appreciate the fact, if I don't know school code, going to Council of Great City Schools isn't going to be telling me what I need to know.
It wouldn't tell you anything.
It wouldn't tell me anything, so if you want to send out the location and the code, then we would have received it, right now, we don't get it.
One, two, seven, seven, I'll I'll double check, I know I have it on my desktop.
Okay, but if you can forward that to members and just say, is that the question, just send that out, that would be easy.
Of course, too easy, and then if there's questions as they're looking at it, we, we're always, we could even make a work session on what's a KPI.
It's only, it's only a one of so many different factors, and I agree with you completely on that. But it is something that's interesting to look at when you're looking for departments, but it might be an opportunity.
A certain point.
Also, it's all, all of this is in board docs as well, which you have access to. All board members have access to it.
For the Council of Great City Schools thing?
Yeah, it's all in the board docs, yep.
Any other questions, comments, debates on whether we start a procurement process audit? Hearing no one, I would put that to a vote, all those in favor, please say yes. All opposed?
Yes, I'm a yes, I just had my mute on.
An unmuted yes, um I I vote yes on that, any opposed? Hearing no opposition, that passes as well, and that will be something that I sit down with President Bellamy and the superintendent. And begin discussion, um anyone else have ideas for operational audits that they thought of in the meantime? I probably won't wait as long as for people that are muted. Um if not, that is our agenda for today. Anyone have any concerns they wish to raise? Any comments, questions, delay tactics?
I'm just looking forward to our next meeting, I've got several items that have been pending for about a year or so.
That that, Dec- December is tomorrow, turns out, tomorrow, day after tomorrow, it's close, anyway. Hearing none other, I will adjourn the meeting and uh our regular meeting in December will happen sometime pretty soon.
December seventh, our regular meeting is the fifth, our next governance is the seventh.
So, okay, our next regular governance meeting is December seventh, we'll see you there, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.